...of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personal appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV Online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our Community Leadership Committee members who are in attendance this evening and our AVP students from Cywoods High School: Cameron Morgan, Tom Vachez, Ela Santiago, and Tanner Williams, and their advisor is Lori Andre. So we appreciate them being here and helping out tonight. Also, just a little housekeeping note, Ms. Hartley is feeling a little under the weather tonight, so she will not be here, but she will be here Monday because I know Saturday she's going to the Cy-Rants game.[127.72][127.72](Laughter) So she better be here Monday. Just throw that out there. By the way, it's at 3:30, Alamo Dome, San Antonio. It's on a far drive. Go support the Mustangs.[137.26][137.26](Laughter) The Board will hear the following reports. Agenda Item 4A: In accordance with Texas Education Code and State Board of Education Regulations, the President of the Board shall announce the name of each Board member who has completed, exceeded, or who is deficient in the continuing education required under law. All Board of Trustees completed or exceeded the continuing education requirements required under state law. Good job, guys. Agenda Item 4B: The Administration will provide an oral report on the proposed master project schedule for projects included in the 2014 bond program and remaining new schools to be constructed from the 2007 bond program, and our presenter is Mr. Roy Sprague.
President Ryan, Members of the Board, Dr. Henry. Tonight, we are presenting to you the 2007 and 2014 bond program master schedule that we've been developing since the successful bond election back in May. This master schedule will include the remaining new facilities left to be constructed from our 2007 bond, as well as all the projects that were included in the 2014 bond program. You should have a copy of the PowerPoint at your desk that you could use to follow along as we move forward. I want to review shortly just the agenda. We're going to cover just briefly what's in the scope of work on all the remaining projects for '07 as well as '14, and then I'll review the major criteria that we utilized to try to help develop this proposed scheduling. And then we'll also share with you various anticipated project schedules we developed during the process that we base this schedule from. And then we'll share with you the various six phases that we've broken the projects in and how they're allocated across the six years to accomplish the goal of completing all the projects in the $1.2 billion program. In the 2007 program, we still have several projects left to construct. We currently have Elementary School Number 54, that's currently under construction, Woodard Elementary School, and we anticipate having that complete and ready for our 2016-17 school year. We also have Elementary, I'm sorry, that was Elementary, the completion date is 2015-16. I was incorrect on that, sorry. We also have Elementary Schools 56 and 55 to complete. High School Number 11 is currently under construction. We actually completed, substantially completed our site package, and now we have already started construction on the building. And we're currently installing grade beams, as well as drill piers, and site work, and athletic fields and stuff are under construction. So we've got our teams very busy out there making sure we meet the schedule for that project, and that school is scheduled to open for the 2016-17 school year. We're currently designing High School Number 12 right now, as well as we're designing Elementary School 55, and that's going to be located on the site that we're purchasing in the Bridgeland. We anticipate doing something similar like we did on High School 11 and doing a site package sometime in the first quarter of next year, and then we'll follow with a building package. And included in that building package will be the Elementary School 55. We want to package those two projects together for cost savings, even though Elementary Number 55 is not scheduled to open for the 2017 school year, just like High School Number 12 is scheduled for the 2017-18 school year. And then we'll also be continuing with all the various site purchases to continue to deal with the growth of the district. In 2014, in the bond program, we had mainly three main new schools, Elementary 57 and 58, as well as Middle School 19. We also had included there is a new replacement school for Matske that would be constructed on a 20-acre site just east of Cy-Creek High School along Mills Road. We also have included a brand-new natatorium, an ag center, a cold food warehouse, as well as various site purchases. As for the facility renovations, we have a total of about $666 million included in the bond program, perform renovations at basically every facility in the district. And if you recall from the bond study, included in that is three major renovations additions, which will be over at Adam, Bain, and Watkins Middle School. Those will be very similar to what we did at Post and Jersey Village High School, Cy-Creek High School, Blile, Campbell, Holbrook are some of the past ones where we come in and basically give the building a good facelift because of the age of the building and reconfigure classrooms and do major renovations and overhaul the facility to maintain the asset protection for that structure. As you all know, the safety and security was a big component of our bond program, and a lot of our projects are based around asset protection and the safety and security for our students as well as our staff. Included in the bond program is about $55 million worth of security enhancements and upgrades, which includes card reader access, front door video camera and buzzers, new communication towers to help us with our radio systems throughout the district for campus communications, police department, and other service departments. We'll also be including emergency call buttons, as well as lockdown panic buttons, and we'll be looking at bullet-resistant glass at our main entries to try to upgrade again for enhancing the security of our occupants of our building. Transportation included in that portion of the scope is about $72 million worth of work. It's part of the $1.2 billion program. That includes the construction of a new transportation center, which will be located on the west side of the district, and it's actually going to be located on our Hagar site, right there at West Green in 529. We have 20 acres allocated for the new transportation center to be located there. It also included the purchase of new school buses, as well as the restoration of the Two Mile Service. The school buses not only was for growth, but it was also for a 15-year replacement cycle that we felt, and it was approved by the committee and by our voters. And I'm happy to report that we obviously got the restoration of the Two Mile Service in place. We're currently busing approximately 8,000-plus students as a result of the implementation of that service. And I do want to commend Matt Morgan and Bill Powell and the rest of the transportation team for a job well done in the tight timeline they had to make that organized and be ready for our school year this year to make it work for the safety.
(Inaudible) the public having the students that we transport each day?
Oh, Matt, isn't it about 70,000?
About 78,000.
And then included in the transportation is the GPS systems in buses, as well as doing some video camera and DVR upgrades in our buses as well. Moving to technology, we have a total of about $217 million included in the bond program to do a major network infrastructure upgrade, as well as increasing our instructional technology at all our existing and new campuses over the course of these six years, as well as in order to support that network infrastructure, we have a combination of lots of IDF and MDF rooms located throughout our district at various campuses, and we'll be upgrading or adding additional air conditioning to support those network locations to ensure the viability and the operation of our systems. The big part, I kind of refer to this as a jigsaw puzzle when we have to look at all the various criteria to try to piece together all the projects and all the requirements we have to do to develop the schedule. Our team developed some criteria as we moved through the process, and I've listed some of these criteria here, which, you know, one is to tackle the critical replacements first. One of the things we did is we met with our maintenance department group and tried to make sure we clearly understand the critical replacements that were needed to make sure we maintained school operations. And that mainly is our HVAC and our electrical systems, because if any one of those systems fail, a lot of times we have a very difficult decision of can we keep the building open and comfortable and a good learning environment while we're trying to deal with an HVAC issue or an electrical issue, a power outage and so forth. So that was one of our major criteria that we looked at in trying to develop the scheduling of our projects over the six-year period for the renovation part of the program. Also, one of the things, in past bond programs, we've allocated projects based on like-type systems. So if we were going in and replacing fire alarm systems, we might package three, four, five of those together and just go in and do the fire alarm system, and it's an effective way of doing it. But what it did do is it did cause disruption to the campuses several times during the course of that bond program time period. So we felt going into this one and the size of this bond program, it makes better sense, and we think will be much more cost-effective this go around, is we go to that campus one time. So any renovations that are included in the bond program, when we go hit that campus, we go ahead and perform all the renovations as one project based on the schedules we've developed to do that, and we feel that will minimize the interruptions to the instructional environment and minimize people having to move furniture and packing up and so forth at the teachers and make sure we can maximize their instructional time at the campus. Obviously, Dr. Henry's goal was to start implementing the safety and security features that were included in the bond, and as I go into the phasing component, I'll review some of those, but that was a criteria that we utilized in trying to schedule the work and which projects we should look at first in the first couple of phases and some of that scope of work on the security that would be part of the renovations at the campuses. And then most critical, too, is the coordination with a projected six-year bond sale schedule. Working with Stuart Snow and his team in the finance group and trying to figure out what the dollar value that we could work to on a per-phase, per-year basis over the six years so that we can try to schedule the projects and the dollar value of those projects to fit within those financial constraints so we can minimize the tax rate impact to our taxpayers. And so it required a lot of shuffling around of projects and trying to make the dollars work to stay within the cap that Stuart had asked us to try to stay within so he can maintain that tax rate that he had projected for the program. And then the other thing we're dealing with is, as y'all, everybody drives around the city of Houston, you see tower cranes everywhere and construction activities everywhere. So we're seeing a very strong construction market, which is creating some resource allocation issues in terms of getting contractors and subcontractors to work on projects. What that means is we don't get the same-sized crews working on our projects like we're used to, so it's extending the schedules and it's making it much more difficult for us to finish the projects on our scheduled dates that we're trying to do. So one of the things that Dr. Henry asked us to do, and I agree totally, is that we really need to look at our schedules and extending our schedules. And so what we did was, we looked at our current past schedules that we've done and tried to work through, which worked very effectively over the years, but we're in a very different market now. So we really need to look at increasing our construction time on our projects, especially on the new schools, as well as the renovations. And then the other thing, when you have such a large construction market like we have, trying to get permit approvals is getting more and more difficult with the city of Houston, as well as Harris County. And it's taken us two to three months in some cases to get approvals, to go through that process, to be able to get a permit so we can start construction and still meet the demands of our opening dates that we need to support the growth of the district. So that was a big factor as well as we looked and developed the schedule. So what we did is we developed basically several anticipated schedules based on our past experience and what we're projecting the market to be today. On a new elementary school, we're now projecting it will take approximately 28 months to design and construct. So when we start the design process and basically turn the keys over to the campus and move in, we anticipate about 28 months, and then usually you have a warranty period beyond that. A new middle school is about 34 months is what we're projecting. What we were doing in the past, we could build an elementary school in about 13 to 14 months. We think right now it's going to take about 18 months in the current market to construct an elementary school. And a middle school, we could usually do in about 19 months, and we're looking at about 22 months in terms of construction duration in order to meet the demand. So we had to take that into consideration on where we placed those schools to start so we can still meet the projected dates of opening based on the demographic study that we're working with in terms of the projected open dates for each of the new facilities. When we went into the renovation component, you know, we have a lot of the times you'll see where we go in and do a summer renovation. So usually projects that are valued at $6 million and below are projects that we can start design and do construction and do it in about a 10-month schedule or even shorter in past construction programs. But looking at the market and the type of work we'd be doing, we anticipate any jobs under $6 million to take approximately 10 months to construct and design. We classified an intermediate renovation between $6 million and $10 million, and we anticipate about 19 months for design and construction time to complete those projects. And then when we get into the larger renovations, when you get into the 10 to $20 million range, we really believe it's going to take 24 months to do the design permitting and the construction of those, which would probably take over two summers to do those types of projects and then try to work through the school year, work at night or on weekends as we're working through the scope of work at a particular campus. And then we have also large renovations that are over $20 million, which gets into the category of those major addition and renovations, like I mentioned before, Bain, Adam, and Watkins Middle School, and we anticipate those will take 35 months to do that. Obviously, our goal would be if we can shorten those schedules out, as time goes on, we'll certainly work towards that. But in developing the schedule, we had to come up with some type of criteria to try to develop the, where we place these projects in each of the phases. What I'm going to do is, we're now entering Phase 1. I'll kind of relay to you what we, you know, I mentioned to you about we're designing High School Number 12. It's currently in the design, and I've told you about the schedule there. One of the big projects that's included in our bond program is the renovations to Pridgen Stadium, which we're also including the new natatorium to be placed on that site. So we're currently in the design stages on that project right now, and what we're actually anticipating doing is issuing a site package in the first quarter of next year so we can all go do the concrete work and redo the parking lot at Pridgen Stadium and have that ready for the next football season. Then as we construct the new press box and doing all the other upgrades, we'll start that after football season in November, once we complete the season, and then we'll construct it from there so we can complete the project. We're anticipating in August of 2016. So we're ready for the 2016-17 opening, because once we open up High School Number 11, then we become two UIL districts, so we want to make sure we get that facility ready to go as we enter into that two UIL district component that we're dealing with. The other projects we're working on and we've started design work on is the security enhancements. We're going to go ahead and look at doing card reader access controls at our campuses where we don't have them at. Those will be the ones that are priority, and then some of the other existing campuses that do have some of the card reader access, we will probably add additional card readers to enhance the security controls at our campuses. We'll also be doing those video cameras and buzzers that you may see at several of our campuses now when you go to the front door, and during school hours, the door, front doors are locked, you have to buzz yourself in or you have to hit the button. They need to see who you are before they let you enter into the building, and we'll be adding those at all the various campuses that currently do not have those as well. And then we're also going to work on the Bradley Center and the Police Center to do some upgrades to their cameras that is needed at that facility as well. The big part of Phase 1 as well is the network technology package, which is the network infrastructure that Frankie Jackson and her team are working on and making great strides in programming and scheduling the scope of work for that, and that's a big part of this first phase of the project that was included in our first bond sale. They have a little bit of instructional technology in there, I think for a history program, and then we also have, as I mentioned before, the MDF IDF room enhancements that we have to do. So we're coordinating with Frankie's team based on how she's implementing the network infrastructure package so we can develop packages for the MDF IDF and electrical support to coordinate with her schedule to ensure that we have continuity with the network system she's moving forward with. In Phase 2, obviously, the major renovations, we want to look at starting those because those are, you know, as I mentioned, about a 35-month schedule. So we'll start the design work on those sometime in August and September of next year and get that working, because we anticipate a pretty long design schedule to figure out the renovations and improvements and then especially the phasing. And then we'll also be working on, you know, Elementary 55, as well as the design of Elementary 56. Has a couple of highlights, as well as we'd be looking at designing the new Matske replacement school on that new site, and then when we complete that and move Matske over there, then we have later in our schedule to come back in and renovate the Matske facility to some other purpose. Also, I've indicated all the security that would be included, which would be the emergency call boxes, and you'll see through each of these phases that we'll be doing phase purchases of our buses across the five-years to six-year program, as well as all the instructional technology needed for new schools as well as existing campuses based on the schedules that Frankie and her team have developed. In Phase 3, we'll have, be starting design work on Middle School 19 to meet the projected opening date for the 19-20 school year, and then, as I mentioned, we'd start on the Matske Elementary School Design Repurpose, as well as some other renovations that we have listed in the schedule. In Phase 4, we'll be working on Elementary School 57 and starting the design work there, as well as other, you know, significant renovations there. And then as we move into Phase 5 and Phase 6, they, these are the ones that start getting into smaller packages, and they're the smaller dollar value, so you'll see where we've actually put two or three schools together. So we tried to match up, you know, locations, as well as the type of scope of work that's there, so it's fairly compatible, and we think that will get us the best bang for the buck in terms of putting some of those packages together that way and scheduling it. So you can see as we get into Phase 5, and then as I show you Phase 6, it's starting increasing, the project, number of projects we'll be managing will be increasing, but they're smaller projects. And then as we get into Phase 6, you'll see the various campuses that we have listed, which is primarily all renovation work, as well as doing some of the instructional technology needed for Elementary School 58. So with that, I do, before we close, I would like to thank several key people. I certainly want to thank Stuart Snow and the finance team with the financial data that we needed to do to get from them to work this schedule out. I want to thank Dylan Brady and the rest of our facilities team and their help and their input through this process, as well as Frankie Jackson and her technology team, and then, of course, the superintendent and our cabinet with their valuable input as we move through this process to develop this proposed schedule. I do want to point one thing out, is things change, market changes, critical replacements may change. You know, we're using our best professional judgment on the basis of how we schedule this, but if we start catching wind that we have a chiller that is starting to malfunction or a central plant's going down, we may be shifting some of these projects around to make sure we take care of the critical replacements so we can maintain our school operations on a day-in, a day-out basis. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. This is our best plan as we see it today, but it could be subject to changes. If it looks like enrollments are changing, we have to move a new school up in schedule, that will certainly impact based on the dollars we can sell for bonds, and so it may push some schools back, or it may move some things up as we go through this. But as we run into those situations, we'll plan on updating the schedule so that we have a good schedule that we can communicate with you all, as well as our general public so they kind of have an idea of when we're going to be going to the campuses over the six-year period to perform the work there. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from Board members? Mr. Kove?
On the safety and security, Roy, and first of all, excellent report. I'm going to keep this in my car, because I have people that are asking me all the time, "When are you opening High School 94?" or something like that, you know, so...[1418.13][1418.13](Laughter) At least I'll have this and I can look at it and say that's Phase 12. We haven't got there yet.[1422.45][1422.45](Laughter) On safety and security, and we talked about some of the elementary schools, and maybe that's in here and I just don't see how it is, and some of the elementary schools that you can walk into and that door is locked, but then you get inside and you've got open hallways. Are we addressing that early? Because I thought we were.
Well, the security vestibules, considering the type of work that may be involved in there, the way we currently have it scheduled out is when we go do the renovations at that particular campus, the security vestibules will be incorporated as part of that renovation, because we may be getting into lots of walls, we may have to modify air conditioning depending on the various campuses out there. So we feel that will be a much more cost-effective way of doing that to maximize what we can for the security. One thing, you know, as I mentioned, we're moving the access card readers so we can get a better perimeter security, as well as the video buzzers and camera in the buzzers at the front door. And then also included, and I should have mentioned that in the presentation, at each of the renovations, we have digital camera upgrades of existing cameras and installing additional cameras. One of the things we'll be doing is installing, I think it's 10 additional cameras at elementaries, 20 at middle schools, and I think 40 at high schools. And so when we go to those campuses, we'll be including the digital camera upgrades and additional cameras, as well as any security vestibules that are included on all the campuses.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Dr. Ultri?
Roy, awesome report, and just the immensity of the work is just mind-boggling. I do have this question. We have some of the elementary schools that have the older kitchen setup, and if I read this right, and it's causing them to have quite a lunch schedule, but if I read this right, that if that school is on the schedule for 2019, does that mean that that system will have to exist until that time, and there won't be any change in that kitchen setup?
Right now, that's the way we've developed the schedule, but as we work with the food service team, and if it becomes a much more critical situation, it's one of those things, as I mentioned, we can shift things around, and we may have to shift things around. So in some cases, we may have to pull some work out of, instead of me doing all the work at the campus, if it becomes a critical issue, I may need to pull some of the work out of that package, go do it sooner, and then we'll still come back to that campus and do the rest of the renovations, maybe at a later date or the scheduled date that we currently have in the schedule.
Any other questions? Mr. Jackson?
One item that you already covered, but I think it bears highlighting. There's two basic strategies that are employed on selling of the bonds and matching of the work. The press has reported on one entity that employed the strategy of selling all the bonds up front, and then you have to fulfill the contracts. The other strategy is you sell the bonds on a staged approach. Which approach, which strategic approach is the district using and why?
Basically, we're using a staged approach, and then I'm sure Stuart could help with the response on this as the impact financially in scheduling that over a six-year period.
Well, we have, excuse me, have a number of issues when you, it's a good question, but when you consider the answer to that question. First of all, we do a staged approach, sell the bonds when we need the money, as opposed to selling it all $1.2 billion at one time. We certainly have to look at the impact on our tax rate and what that might be, what that might look like in terms of, and comparing that with the increases or changes in our property values that have an impact also on that tax rate. You also have arbitrage issues in that we're restricted over a period of number of years. Generally, it's two years that, once you sell bonds, you have to substantially complete the expenditure of those funds. And so when you sell a lump sum of new money that you don't intend to use right away and use for a construction or renovation, then basically you're putting that money away for speculation to earn interest, and that puts you in an arbitrage position where you would likely have to rebate back to the federal government on any proceeds that you earn in excess of the bond yield. that you earn in excess of the bond yield.
Thank you. The, and then also, one, one question regarding flexibility. The program that Bob Koby started, whereby all of the board members go out to visit the different campuses, and as Dr. Ogletree pointed out about the kitchen renovations, it's clear that some of the campuses on the original design, perhaps, did not envision feeding quite as many children. And certainly, some of the kitchen and serving line renovations have worked out very dramatically, to the benefit. But also, there's a couple of campuses that you go through, and you find out, "We really didn't have enough additional space to work with to introduce the multiple-serving line concept." I don't know if there's money within the budget to address those areas, where architects or flow planners may look at it and say, "You just don't have enough space to do what you think you want to do." But I would certainly encourage you to, to take the time to see if it is possible, if there is additional funds in the budget, to address that, where the original design footprint was appropriately conservative at the time, but as, as we teach more and more children at that campus, perhaps that footprint is not all that we would like it to be.
Let me point out that included in the bond program at numerous cameras, campuses, we do have kitchen upgrades. I didn't bring the list with me, but when we went through the bond study process, we worked with our food service department, got their feedback, as well as campus feedback. And then, that was how we developed the list of needs, and then, we tried to prioritize those. Now, not all kitchen renovations were approved, because we were at a $1.9 billion list of needs that we had when we did the study, and the committee, you know, pared it down to $1.2 billion, eventually, what the voters approved. But we do have some kitchen renovations included in the campus, and if you'd like, I'd certainly be glad to provide you a list of those campuses, that'll help you, where we know we are definitely going in and doing that. And then, anytime we go to a campus, we also, if there's something that wasn't included in the bond, but depending on the type of scope of work, we look at those types of things, that it may not have been included in the original scope, but we certainly want to look at, to see if there's something we can do to improve the campus. And we've been very successful, over the last four bond programs, to be able to do extra projects, and take care of things at campuses that were not originally part of the original scope, when we developed the bond study.
Any additional questions? Roy, that was, as what Bob said, that was a great report, and I've, I tell everybody, you're pretty much the king of controlled chaos.
[laughing]
And you, you and your team always meet your deadlines. So, I know you mentioned that in your presentation, but I can tell you that we're really not worried, because we know that you'll do a great job. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank your team as well, please.
Thank you.
I'd like to move up, we have some guests from out of town. I'd like to move up Agenda Item 6A and 6B. That'll be Page 279, 283, in your board book. Agenda Item 6A, the board will consider approving a resolution to freeze the existing non-TRS pension plan, as of December 31, 2014, and allow the district to negotiate with and select the administrator of the non-TRS pension plan. And then, we'll go right into, you can come on up, Karen. We'll go right into 6B, the board will consider approving a resolution to create a FICA alternative plan through an inter-local agreement with the Region 10 Education Service Center, effective January 1, 2015. Our presenters will be Stuart Snow and Karen Smith.
Thank you, President Ryan. I'm actually going to turn it over to Karen to make a brief presentation, as well as introduce our guest.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. First of all, I would like to introduce our guest, in case we have any questions. JEM, we have Mike Cochran, John Pesky, and Sandy Stauffer. First of all, I'd like to explain to you what the, what the law is associated with having either social, employees contribute to Social Security or a FICA alternative plan. Back in 1990, federal legislation was passed, saying that any government entity, they had a choice, the entrance into the plan that could not participate in the state retirement plan, which for the district is the TRS plan. If they are not eligible to participate, then they either have to contribute to Social Security or a FICA alternative plan. For, for our district, what that entails is it's our substitutes, our part-time employees, as well as our temporary employees. In 1992, the district developed a non-TRS pension plan. That plan is a defined benefit plan. And what that means is, the district contributes based on a percentage of salary, years of service, as well as the age of the employee, a certain dollar amount into this plan. When the plan was formed, interest rates were very good, and the interest earned on the plan assets was greater than the guaranteed yield to the employee per year that was going to accumulate into the plan. That guaranteed amount is 7%. And I guess you all know that our interest rates right now aren't even close to 7%. In fact, it's been over 10 years since we've actually had a gain that's greater than that amount. As a result of that, we have an unfunded liability in that plan. Another issue associated with that plan is, it currently requires that if an employee leaves the district and is not eligible to retire, that they have to wait two years to access their funds. In addition, if they are not age 59 and a half, if they do withdraw their funds, then they have to pay a 10% penalty. So, we've been looking at this, because that's our greatest complaints from our employees. We get a complaint of, "Why do I have to wait two years? I've worked in other districts, and it doesn't operate this way." Well, the reason for that is because the district is the only district in the state of Texas that has a defined benefit plan for their FICA alternative plan. Most districts have a defined contribution plan, which I will explain to you in a minute, that we are proposing. The employees also do not understand, even though we explain that there is a 10% penalty if they withdraw their funds before 59 and a half, they, they don't realize why they're not getting their entire benefit that they thought they were receiving. The district has been also looking at what type of plan would be best for us. And so, what we are proposing is a defined contribution plan. What that entails is, the employee would contribute 7.5% towards that plan, which is what Social Security is, and they would be contributing the 7.5% to this plan. We would freeze the existing plan, so that the liability does not continue to develop. And what that would do is, it would freeze the liability for the existing participants in the plan, and not allow anybody, any new employees to enter that plan. So, that limits the liability that the district has. Then, we would form the other, which we have a resolution for, this FICA alternative plan, which is in essence, a 457 plan. The benefits to the employee is, that it's the same as the other plans that other school districts have, as well as, they contribute 7.5%, but when they leave the district, they get that whole 7.5% back, plus any interest earned on that 7.5%. So, it's a savings plan for the employee. Also, that the 7.5% comes out of the employee's check, pre-tax, which reduces their tax base. If they leave the district and go to another district, they are eligible to withdraw the funds right away. In addition, they will not be paying a 10% penalty if they retire before age 59 and a half. The district, right now, if we kept the existing plan in over a 10-year period, our liability would accumulate in excess of $20 million. So, with doing this, we are limiting any liability, future liability, and we are giving the employee, which we believe, a better plan. Now, I'm ready to answer any questions you may have on it.
Mr. Jackson?
I have my standard questions. They never really change. The topics change, but my questions remain the same. Last, last month, I asked about unfunded liabilities, and the changing accounting rules requiring that recognition. What is our current unfunded liability?
The unfunded liability is around $6 million. What we are hoping to do, and what you will also see as part of one of your resolutions, is that the prior plan, or the current plan that we have that we will be freezing, is we are looking at who should be administering that plan, and we're hoping to reduce that liability that's in the existing plan. But that is not part of the district's annual financial statements. It's a separate set of financial statements. And what we're required to do, we have to actually report to the pension board, and it's, it requires an annual audit, as well as an actuarial review. But it's a separate set of financial statements, separate from the district's.
And under the changes that have been approved by GASB, that $6 million will show up, one way or the other, in next year's financials, correct?
You are correct. Next year is the first year that we will be required to include it.
And we are, are we contractually obligated to fund that unfunded liability if the assets of that plan do not generate the shortage?
There's actually a formula, and that's why we have to have the actuarial reviews, where they look at how much we need to fund, and if it's, if the balance that's in there is sufficient, because it's based on determining when they think the funds will be withdrawn, and that it's over a period of time. So, we do not, at this point in time, have a set amount we have to contribute by freezing the plan. Now, if we terminated the plan, then that would be different. But if, by freezing the plan, we are limiting that liability that exists right now.
Let me just add, add one thing. Our, our plan is that, in terms of freezing the plan, obviously, it freezes the liability as well at that point in time, because it would not accrue to any greater amount. And that our plan is then, to freeze it for a period of three years or so, and then, pay, pay down that liability over that three-year period, which is significantly more manageable at that point in time. And then, and then the plan then, at the end of that three-year period, is to terminate the plan altogether.
So, at the end of the three-year period of time, we would in fact be obligated to go ahead and, and fund, fund any unfunded liability, correct?
Well, at the end of that three-year period, that unfunded liability should be paid off, should be zero.
Yeah.
Because we intend to pay that down each year.
We'll make contributions.
Well, we would, yes, we would include that in our budget, our annual budget each year, the, the amount of the payment.
When we talk about freezing the plan, there's a couple of different ways that these, that you can freeze these plans, and, and I'm not certain I, I fully understand which approach we're taking. For those individuals who are currently covered by that plan, and you mentioned that this includes substitutes and part-time employees, if they remain as substitutes, and let us assume that the board approves the resolutions that you have presented, if they remain substitutes, are we moving everybody to the new plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, it's, so even those who are currently covered under the old plan, everybody moves to the new plan, not just new employees?
That is correct. And that would be effective January 1. They'll still get what's in the existing plan, but effective January 1, 2015, they'll start contributing to a different plan. So, they'll have, oh, sorry.
So, those current substitutes that are currently participants in the defined contribution plan, would effectively be participants in both plans?
And you really meant the defined benefit plan?
Yeah.
As we're moving to a defined contribution?
Correct. Any new, any new substitutes to the district, or any new part-time employees or temporary employees, would be prohibited from being participants in the old frozen plan. They would all be automatically moved into the new plan.
But, but we're also moving all existing?
That's what I'm saying. All existing.
Plus, all new employees.
Plus, all existing employees and substitutes would be moved to the new plan, but they would also have an account balance in the old plan as well, until we terminate that plan.
Now, Karen, you mentioned that employees will contribute 7% or 7.5%.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a district contribution?
No, there is not a district contribution.
Under the old plan, was there a district contribution?
Yes, there was a district contribution to the old plan.
And, and this, this question is really from a management standpoint, and I don't know that you've had, had time to, to analyze this. Mr. Koby brought up, several board meetings ago, a concern that, from time to time, perhaps, we don't have as many substitutes as otherwise we might like. Will this put us at a competitive advantage from filling those substitute roles?
Well, we, we think so. Number one, I, something that Karen said that I think's important, is we're the only school district in the state that has this current plan, and it's completely different from what our substitutes are dealing with in other school districts. And again, I go back, our, our part-time employees, our, our substitutes cannot get the money for two years. And I don't think I'm wrong in saying, Stuart, that we literally have hundreds of employees that have money now that we can't even find them, former employees.
About 14,000 of them.
14,000.
We have, we have retired employees that are participants in the plan, that may not even realize that they have a balance in the plan. So, our, our plan going forward is to, with the help of an administrator, to locate those employees, pay them off, and make sure that they're, they receive the amount of their balance. And that, that also will help reduce the unfunded liability as we, as we pay that down.
To answer your question, though, your question was, will it hurt us in getting subs? I don't think so. I think it'll help us.
Okay.
In getting subs, because it's what substitute teachers are used to dealing with.
And the substitutes tend to want, when they leave, they want their, if they leave the district, they want their money. That's what we're finding.
I think Mr. Koby had a question.
Yeah, just from someone that is challenged with mathematical decisions. Can you just summarize, is there any negative to this, to, to the employees that we have? Is there a negative to us making this change, or is it all positive?
Well, the only, I guess you could say, possible perceived would be the contribution of the 7.5%, but it's, they get that entire amount back. So, in our opinion, there really isn't, there is not a negative, because they will get that 7.5% back when they leave the district, or they retire, as well as interest earned on that.
It's really a forced savings account for the employee.
Right. I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
So, since we have the plan, it is not optional, it's mandatory, is that the sort?
That is correct.
We're the only district that is doing this?
Yes.
We're the only district that has a defined pension plan. Most districts, when the law was passed back in 1990, where you, you had a choice of either continue to contribute to Social Security, which required the contribution from the employee, as well as the school district in the matching. And so, many districts, so they didn't have to match that, what they went to was the FICA alternative plans. And the districts, what they formed was a defined contribution plan, where the employee, rather than contributing to Social Security, contributed to this FICA alternative plan. And that's what most of the districts in the state of Texas have. We're the only district in the state that has a defined benefit plan.
And so, under the old plan, once the withdrawal, then that's, it's taxable.
Correct.
But the new plan is just a savings account?
When they withdraw, withdraw their funds prior to, or, yeah, prior to 59 and a half, in both plans, the withdrawal is taxable in both plans.
Okay.
As ordinary income. However, with a defined benefit plan, if you withdraw the funds prior to 59, age 59 and a half, then there's a 10% penalty on top of that.
Okay.
We learned what the employees will have to contribute in the defined contribution plan. What did they contribute in the defined benefit? And I understand the district is not going to do anything in the defined contribution plan, but they did do some kind of payment in the defined benefit. Can you give us those numbers also?
The, the amount that the district contributed in the defined benefit plan, it, it's a factor, and it's based on 2% of their salary, based on, and there's a factor applied based on their age, and it's, it's an act- based on their age, and it's, it's an actuarial
Formula.
calculation or formula. It's a very small amount that, that the, in the district was contributing this. The employee did not contribute to that plan. And as a result, many, and they're automatically enrolled into the plan, because you have to contribute to one, either that or Social Security. And, or, and that was our FICA alternative plan at the time. And so they're automatically enrolled. Even though we tell them they're enrolled, many of them didn't realize it. They don't even know they have this money. And so in this other situation, they're going to know they have the money. And then when they leave the district, they get the money back, plus interest.
Any additional questions from board members? Tom?
The second part of this is that you want to establish an interlocal agreement with Region 10 Service Center.
Correct.
Where is Region 10 Service Center located? And why did you select Region 10 Service Center?
Region 10 is in the Dallas area.
Richardson.
In the Dallas-Richardson area, yeah. And we selected them because they have done many of these FICA alternative plans. And, you know, the employees, they, we benefit from the total assets within the plan, like earning interest, the interest earned on the plan. And so they have done many of these type of plans.
Just, just a question, and I'm not for sure about this, and maybe Mike or John needs to answer, but you may know, Karen. Are, are they the only service center that has this kind of, of plan in the state? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Yes, they are.
It's the only one I've ever heard of, is the reason I asked that.
That's probably a good reason to go with them, Mark. Just off the top of my head. Nothing gets by me. Any additional questions?
Yeah, just one. Has there been any conversation with any of the teachers groups or other school district employee groups that are going to be impacted by this?
We have been working with human resources and the substitute office on this. And in talking with the substitute office, they feel, they were in support of this, because they believed a lot of the employees do not know the plan exists, as we've stated before. And they feel that they will be glad that they can access their money quickly if they leave the district.
Yeah. But, but we hadn't met with TCTA?
We have not met with those groups.
TSTA.
Yeah, I, I just think sharing and comparing, you know, this, what we're putting out there might be a good idea, just to make sure everybody's educated on what we're doing and looking out for, for their best interests.
But when we do have planned communication with them, we were just wanting to share it with the board first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. That's important, especially since it's their money.
You think?
Yes, exactly. Stuart and Karen, thank you very much. And then Mike, John, and Sandy, I know y'all came in from Dallas. So we appreciate you being here, and we won't be offended if you want to get up and leave right now.
You didn't tell me that.
Yeah. That will take us back to Agenda Item, oh, real quick. I'd like to put that item on consent, since, if there's any, all right, let's do that, Donna. Thank you. Agenda Item 4C, the administration will provide a written report on the 2011-2014 safety and security audit. Any questions from board? The board will now review and discuss the following action items. Agenda Item 5A, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders.
Don? What? I did have one question.
On, you had a question on 4C?
Yes.
Okay. That would, Deborah, you ready for this? Let's go with you.
Yeah, if I'm not, then Ralph and
I might have to bring in Ife with the big stick, or Ralph?
Ife is here, they're here.
Okay, awesome.
Mr. Jackson?
Hello, Ralph.
How you doing, sir?
Good.
You included the report in the board packet itself, and you categorized the state of readiness by different categories. And you also had colors included on the graph. You had one category, which was basically unacceptable. Do we have plans to, to try and bring all of that up to an acceptable stage? And if so, what is the time period? Is that tied into the presentation that Roy made?
Well, those, you're talking about the intruder audit that we conducted. Yes, sir. As you know, the next cycle starts up from September of 2014 to August 31st, 2017. But we have seen marked improvement from all, all the schools, from all the, all the campuses, elementary, middle, and high school. And yes, with the vestibule systems and the things that we're working on with Roy, we're working on improving those numbers dramatically. I want it 100% personally, and that's what we're working on.
Got you.
Thank you for that report, by the way.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And we were on 5A, which is contracts and purchase orders for art and miscellaneous school supplies, audiovisual theatrical equipment and supplies, Barry Center stage lighting, central packaging, food service, cleaning supplies for food service, Dean Middle School replacement furniture, family and consumer science equipment and supplies, grounds equipment, repair parts, health science equipment and supplies, landscape maintenance services, metal fabrication and repair services, musical instrument repair service, parts and supplies, network, internet, point of presence and data collect, center colocation, office supplies, paper for food service, smallwares for food service, and tires. Any questions from board members? Mr. Jackson?
Item number 13, network, internet, point of presence, and data center colocation. I have a couple of quick questions. First, you identify that this is going to be a Tier 3 to Tier 4 professional data center. Please explain briefly the difference between Tier 1, 2, 3, and 4, and why you made the selection of a Tier 3, 4 data center? And then also include in that the definition of the primary internet point of presence?
I would answer that question, but since Frankie's here, I'm going to let her do that.
Go ahead, Stuart. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff that's here to support me. We have three staff members. We have Paula Ross, our Director of Network Infrastructure and Communications, and then Greg Rhodes, our Network Management Operations Manager, and then also Jay Johnson, who is our Director of Acquisitions, Assets, and Sustainability. So thank you for being here for me. To answer your question, the term tier really refers to a rating that is given to a facility. It's an industry leveled rating that anyone in the business of network infrastructure understands. And so a Tier 1, Tier 2 facility might be a facility similar to ours here at the ISC in, in our, our, our schools. And so there would be basic power, basic cooling, but it would not be sufficient to run mission-critical-based applications, like a student information system, long-term, not to satisfy our goal of the bond, specifically Bond Goal 4, which is to provide mission-critical business continuity, data backup and recovery, virtualized servers, and, and the ability to sustain 100% reliability for our internet connectivity. A Tier 2 provides basic infrastructure with some redundancy, with generators, with the type of electrical power that would be required to be able to run a, a system that we would want to maintain 100% reliability. And then moving up into a Tier 3 and 4 would have dual power, access to backup cooling, a military data center type of framework built around it that could withstand a hurricane or any national disaster. And so when we look at a Cyrus 1, which is what we're, the, the colocation facility that we're recommending, it is qualified as a Tier 4, the highest level of standard that is available in the industry. Your second question was about point of presence?
Yes.
A point of presence is basically a, a way to connect the internet to the world wide web. So you could consider it to be something similar to maybe your cable box in your home. Each of us have connectivity, a point of president, presence in your home that would then connect either all the computers, all the devices in your home. In a district such as Cyfair, we have over, our, our goal will be, we'll have over 350, 400,000 devices to connect. And so our point of presence, we will actually have two. We will have one that will come into the ISC facility. And then we will also have one that would be a secondary point of presence at the colocation facility at Cyrus 1, offering that redundancy, so that if one is unable to perform, if it goes down, then a second internet connection will be provided, which, as we move into the future, we believe that is going to be critical to our success.
You say that, that part of this contract is to build a virtualized server data center. I understand what a virtual data center is, but, but doesn't that say that you really don't have a data center if it's all virtual?
You still have to have a facility to set the virtualized server farm. It's normally what it's required, normally how it's referred to. It doesn't work in, in, you know, magic. You have to still have a facility that would be equipped to house that type of equipment, to make available for our use. The term cloud, the cloud actually does exist, and the cloud applications actually exist in colocation data centers very similar to Cyrus 1.
Last question I have for you. When you take a look at the, the different bids and the manner in which the committee analyzed these bids, you're struck that a major defining factor was suitability. Comment, if you would, very briefly, on the difference of suitability on the, the bids that were a little more competitive from a pricing perspective, and why they would not have been selected?
One of the bids that were lower than the Cyrus 1 is, is a new facility. And that facility is slated to be available in March 2015. Even if it were available in March 2015, we don't want to be the first relying on power, relying on the fiber connections to be laid in the ground. You would still have to connect. We felt that that would be costly, and that it could also delay our schedule. I think we heard from Mr. Sprague, we have a very rigorous schedule, and we want to stick to that schedule, and we felt like this might delay our implementation. The other facility, we had, the, the other bid that we received that, that was less expensive, did not factor in the cost to actually lay the fiber connections to that facility. So that would be an added expense, a more costly expense. So in the long run, that wasn't factored into the bid, it, it had to be a consideration. With Cyrus 1, there is already connection from a fiber location into that facility, and it will not be any additional expense to connect to it, other than what we're already prepared to pay.
Thank you, very thorough answers.
Yes.
Agenda Item 5B, the board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from general funds and bond funds to the recommended contractor, and authorize the superintendent or designated to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts. Barry Center bulk freezer addition. Any questions from board members? Tom?
Roy, for this, is this a infrastructure addition as well as equipment, or merely infrastructure, or merely equipment?
Basically, we'll be building a structured slab with the freezer enclosure, and we have to cut some door openings in from the, you know, the exterior wall to get to the freezer, so to include the slab. So it's a combination of infrastructure and equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Agenda Item 5C, the board will consider approving the district improvement plan for the 2014-15 school year. We don't have a presentation. Do we have any questions? Agenda item, you might want to jump in there when I ask that question, though. Instead of wait for me to move on.
Well, I don't want to be the first always to ask questions, so I'm looking around for, for my colleagues.
You can be the first.
And I guess this goes to Dr. Macias. In your district improvement plan, and it's very thorough, there, there's a couple of areas that I think may need to be highlighted. Right at the front, you talk about the, the pilot pre-K program at Francombe. Would you elaborate briefly on that? And is that with federal, are we using federal grant money or state grant money? And how are we funding it? And then also, I know that any number of districts across the state dropped the pre-K, their pre-K programs in the tremendous budget cutbacks. And briefly explain what this district did, if you would.
Mr. Jackson, you're correct. We have a full-day pre-K pilot at Francombe Elementary. It is funded with Title I funds. It is not district funds, it's, or it's not out of the general budget, it's, it's Title I funds. We looked at the demographics of our elementary schools and looked at those that had the higher economic disadvantage numbers. I believe it was 75 or above. And also looked at the high, those that had high numbers of minority students there as well. And that's how we identified which school to, to, or to begin with a pilot program. It is, as I said, full day, and we have a curriculum that, that covers the entire day. I will share with you that in January, we will be doing a full report on, on pre-K with not only Francombe, but also looking at the Holbrook program that we have, because we do have a full-day program at Francombe. But it's not, it's not all a district program. It's, it's a, part of it, it's a VONCE. But we will bring you data as to how our kids are doing there as compared to the, to the other half-day pre-K programs that we have.
And a follow-up to that, was our district able to maintain our half-day pre-K programs despite the, the budget curtailment?
Absolutely, absolutely. We value our pre-K programs. We believe that they are essential for our kids who are coming to us as second language learners, or economic disadvantage. It's an opportunity to begin bridging, bridging the gaps for them.
So this district made certain strategic decisions different from other districts around the state?
Yes, sir.
I note that in various different areas, as, as part of the improvement plan, you've identified an emphasis on parent involvement, for example, on item number 34, but also on major item number 6, strategies to increase parental involvement. And you even identify allocation of resources to address a certain demographic, subpopulation group. Briefly comment why you believe that enhancing parental involvement is good for the education and attainment of our students. And part of the reason why I'm asking this question is, this is political season, and many, most of what this district does goes unnoticed by the rest of the state. And there's many things that this district does that, that bear remarking upon. So if you would, briefly comment.
Mr. Jackson, we have always put a value on parent involvement. There is research, much research that you can find that talks about parent, high parent involvement equalling high success for our students. And so that's certainly an effort that we've always worked on. You, I believe, have visited some of our parenting programs that we have throughout the district on Saturdays, with over 1,000 parents here for our ELL parents. We have some pilot initiatives that were being funded through Title I, which is what, what, what you're referring to. And what we are expecting to see from that is not only improved communication between the home and the school, improved attendance, improved grades, as well as improved behavior.
Have you also targeted Francombe as one of these areas, as one of the campuses for this enhanced parental involvement?
Yes, that is one of the, one of the programs are, where we have a pilot going on. on. But we also have some of our schools who have their individual programs that they're addressing regarding parent involvement.
Thank you.
Agenda item 5D, the board will consider approving the attached list of students for off-campus physical education, category one, for the 2014-2015 school year spring. Any questions from board members? Agenda item 5E, the board will consider approving on second reading, additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies, CRD local, insurance and annuities management, health and life insurance, it's a revision. Any questions? Stuart, I have one on this, because we pretty much eliminated the wording of part-time in that policy, it's a local policy.
That's correct. It's a local policy. And what that policy, if I recall, said that we should consider a delineation between part-time and full-time employees in setting the rates for health insurance plans because of the Affordable Health Care Act and because of the requirement by TRS, Active Care, to offer insurance to anyone that works 10 hours or more, then it really is a moot point in terms of that policy. And so we're striking that language.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item 5F, the board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Agenda item 5G, the board will consider approving the minutes of the November 10, 2014 regular meeting. Now we'll go on to our non-consent items. 6A and 6B were handled earlier and they have been placed on the consent agenda. 6C, the board will consider approving the granting of a temporary construction easement to West Harris County Regional Water Authority 33 for the installation of a water line along Tuckerton and Greenhouse Road adjacent to Anthony Middle School and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and execute all related documents. Any questions from board members? I'd like to put that on consent. Agenda item 6D, the board will consider approving on first reading, additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies, FDA local admissions, inner district transfers, FEA local attendance, compulsory attendance, FFF local, student welfare, student safety, FL local, student records. Any questions from board members? I'd like to put that on consent as well. Did I get all those on consent, Donna? I didn't skip anything, did I? Okay, sweet. The board will have a discussion on the following, 7A, the board will review options for establishing attendance boundaries for Woodard Elementary School, opening in the 2015-2016 school year. And I'm going to, Teresa, can I put these together?
Yes.
7A and 7B. The board will review, 7B, the board will review rezoning modifications of Holbrook Elementary attendance boundaries for the 2015-16 school year. Our presenters will be Teresa Hole, Kristi Geron, and Blanca Cooper.
Thank you. President Ryan, before I turn it over to Ms. Geron and Ms. Cooper to share the options they presented, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background, just to remind you of the process that we are now following in establishing this and the recommendations that we're going to be providing to you in January as a final recommendation. But we started this process really way back at the beginning of the fall semester and knowing that we needed to establish boundaries for Woodard. But through this process, we've really made certain in working closely with PASA at the projected enrollments that we're going to see for the next school year, but also taking into consideration the fact that we are going to have to draw attendance boundaries for high school 11 and 12 next school year. And when you start drawing and changing high school attendance boundaries, you're naturally going to impact some feeder patterns, middle school and elementary. So in looking at the options and information that we're going to present to you tonight, we really took that into consideration because our goal is always to minimize the number of moves that we have for students looking down the road. So you might see some numbers with projected enrollments that you say, why are you doing that? Kristi will give you some information on that. Also, our goal is always to try to keep neighborhoods together as much as possible and to also look at situations where we may have small groups of students that break off and go on a different feeder pattern. So we've really tried to take all of that into consideration in creating these options. You're going to see with Woodard that we only have one, I guess, one proposal that we're going to share with you. And then with Bain and Holbrook and Kirk boundary changes, we're once again in a situation with Holbrook Elementary that we are really over the capacity of that building and are limited in our options for trying to put portable buildings there. As you know, that site is very confined and that with working with the city of Houston, on top of that, to get portable approval, there's really limited options. So we have a boundary change there that we feel like again can be long-term and providing some relief to Holbrook. And so we're going to share that option with you tonight. We have shared all of this information and received input and feedback from the principals of the campuses that would be impacted by these changes. We worked closely with PASA. So we've really tried to work with multiple people and groups to look at all angles and try to bring forward some good viable options to the trustees. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Geron.
Good evening. We're here today to discuss the opening of Woodard Elementary School and share with you the proposed boundary changes. And as Teresa mentioned, a boundary committee consisting of people from the administration, curriculum, special services, and transportation were able to have input on these proposed changes. In addition, all elementary principals that would have been impacted by these changes also had an opportunity to have input on these changes. As you know, Woodard is located in the Riada Ranch community, west of Barker Cypress and Cypress Northeastern Road. In your packets, there's two clipped, go ahead and get out the Woodard, the one that's right below the, the first one's the schedule of what the timeline, and then the next one is the Woodard. So if you could, get those out. And if you could, put the current boundary for Woodard on the left side and then the option of the proposed on the right. Blanca can only put the current for now and then we'll put the option of the proposed on the right. So you can kind of understand.
It's page one, it's page one and five in our little kit we got.
Yeah, sorry, one and five. And then that way, when I'm going through the pages, you can kind of see where I'm headed. If you look at page one, the current attendance for Postma and Renell and all the surrounding elementary schools, you can kind of see the plan of, the current plan that we have. And then if you look at our page five, you can kind of see, you will see where the Woodard school attendance boundaries are going to be. If you look at page two, that's the current middle school boundary over the elementaries. And then page three indicates the high school boundary overlay over the elementary boundaries. Okay? Page four, you have the current attendance zones and projected resident students for the, up until the 2023-24 school year. And as you can see, the Postma and Renell attendance zones are growing at a very fast pace. Okay? So opening Woodard is going to provide relief for Postma and Renell. We are proposing one option this evening for consideration. This plan can be modified to make additional options based on community input. We've also consulted with PASA and an administrative team to help and formulate this most viable option. If you look at the proposed attendance zone and you look at the changes that we're going to talk about tonight, the current you have, if you look right south of 290, you see Spillane. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page on the middle school, hold on.
Lampkin.
Do what? If you look, if you see south of 290, the very, very top of the Woodard proposed attendance zone, you'll see Res Code 3210. That's Hot Wells. Okay, currently, they go to Lampkin and along with the Watermark Apartments right north of 290, 141 go to Lampkin. We're proposing that those two, 141 go to Robison and 3210 go to Woodard. Okay? So those are the two that are changing from there. Yes, sir.
How many, how many students are in 141 and 3210?
141 currently, for next year will be 27, and Hot Wells is 24.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, 3210, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So right now, currently, or next year, as you can see what kind of stands out, Renell is projected to be at 520, so that's very low. But if you look, when you go through the next several years, they're projected to grow at approximately 200 students a year. And actually, Anthony this year was under-projected and it's already, what is it, 11?
1100?
115 over what we projected, so we anticipate them to go at least 200 a year. So Renell, Renell will catch back up to the others. So going down, you can kind of see Postma, you have that little, if you look at the current, you have that little pie-shaped blue area in the middle of Renell that we, you know, drive through and go to Postma. So it's, if you look where Woodard is and the attendance boundaries that we've formulated, it really makes sense. It's nice and clean. It is, and it also cleans up, like I mentioned a little bit before, I was kind of talking about Hot Wells and that Watermark, those two that are north and south of 290. If you look at the middle and high, they are now a pure feeder and cleans up the feeder patterns for Spillane and Cy Woods. Okay? In addition, we have two little areas over there, if you're looking at your current, you see the Sampson and Jarvis Road, those 2220 and 422. Currently, those schools go to A. Robison. We'd like to move those, and this is a recommendation through transportation, we'd like to move those to Sampson. Very small pocket of kids, it's, next year, it's nine kids total from those two Res Codes, and we'd like to move them to Sampson. And that also cleans up the feeder pattern from high school and middle.
How many, how many in each, how many in 2220 and 422?
Five, five, and then 422 is four.
And is that, is that a neighborhood that's still under development?
No, that's, they're, Cypress Pass Estates is 2220 and then Secret Forest is 422. They're older.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Subdivisions, kind of one street.
And now what would, on the ones at 141 and 3210, that you're proposing they go to Robison and Woodard respectively? What, what middle school, do they currently go to Arnold?
No, they currently go to Spillane. Spillane and then Woods.
Both those go to Spillane?
Mm-hmm, so that cleans that up. And they don't go from Lampkin then to...
So then they would go from Woodard to Spillane?
Right. And Robison to Spillane.
Right. Okay, okay.
So what, we're taking 51 kids from Lampkin and putting them in Woodard and Robison, and then we'll take 741 kids from Renell and give them to Woodard.
And real quick to, real quick to board members, if she's going through, if you've got a question, let's jump on it because somebody else might be thinking the same thing. So that seems to be the most efficient way when we're going through boundaries.
I already have one.
Knock it out.
Looking at number 706 down there.
Yes, sir.
Why wouldn't we include that in Woodard?
There's 201 kids in that area. And we did, when we had, we first started talking about this, that was kind of our option two. We had looked at that and it affected the middle and high. When you looked at Aragon and when you looked at what it did to the high school, and we were afraid when considering options for high school 11 and 12, which we'll be working on in the next year and a half, that we would move them and then have to move them back. So we didn't want to touch that area right there. And Woodard will still open with 995 and giving them 201 additional students, it's...
995?
Yes, sir.
Consider writing that, do something, they can...
Adler Trails?
Yeah.
Yeah, Adler Trails is right below Hot Wells, which is 3238, kind of right by the school. Right now, they don't have any, the projected for the next three years is zero. So we, we don't have any currently or just in the immediate future from there.
995 without even considering those in that, in that area?
Yes, sir.
And then also, because to follow up on what Bob said with that 706, I know Postma's still, that whole area, kind of to the left of Postma, is that, you know, they just started opening up streets and stuff over there and they seem to be building pretty quick. You know, I just don't want to have the possibility of, and Teresa, you can tell me, is that 706 neighborhood built out? Or is there...
Yeah, it is built out.
It is built out?
It is built out.
Okay. I just don't want to have the possibility of if that area of Town Lake blows up, that we have to do what we've done years ago and say, oh, no, yeah, y'all are staying at, y'all are staying at Postma, but now we're going to have to move you to Woodard when we could make that move now. Teresa, you know what I'm talking about, the whole Longwood deal.
Yes.
Right. And now point to the map and the area that you're talking about.
706.
Right there.
Right there. Well, the real situation right now, Mr. Ryan, and we can bring that back to you, we can create that option, it really would potentially change their feeder pattern. And that's what we were trying to, we went back and forth on that particular area because right now, those students go from Postma to Lieby and Falls or Aragon Falls.
They go to Aragon and Cy Falls.
And that would be the only group of students in the Woodard attendance zone that would break off. Now granted, it's 212 students, but I think it's more likely that we would move 212 students in there and really potentially overcrowd Woodard and have to pull them back out. The other thing that we haven't mentioned that we took into consideration as we were looking at all of this, as far as the attendance boundary for Postma, because Postma's starting to grow like you mentioned. There's also Elementary 56. And we have some ideas and plans for a campus that would be around the Joel area. And believe it or not, that is a campus that would provide relief to Andre. And I don't even want to maybe get into that, but point where Andre is. Andre is right there. If you notice, that is a school that is not even in its own attendance zone. So when we open up a new school, Elementary 56, it would provide relief from Andre and then kids that actually live around the current Andre school could go to that school. So it would relieve Postma.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it absolutely does.
Okay.
I just wanted to, the way that it played out, when you look at the numbers, I wanted to make sure we weren't doing a back and forth.
That's a great question. And that, we may get that question, but that's what we took into consideration in leaving those students there because we also know that, you know, Berks continues to be large. But we didn't want to move any kids even with this attendance boundary, or it would not be our recommendation because again, we start getting into some of those feeder pattern changes. And until we look at that holistically, when we start drawing the boundaries for 11 and 12, which we're going to recommend we do all at the same time, there's the potential for some of those things to change. We need to give Cy Falls some relief. We need to give, you know, Cy Lakes relief. There's lots of campuses through all of that attendance boundary change would be impacted in their feeder patterns.
And I know y'all, y'all figured this out because you're very smart people, but we're going to have a major boundary change next year across the district. So we were trying to disrupt as few students as possible before we get into the big one next year.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mark.
Yeah. Sorry.
I have one question. Are they ever going to put Greenhouse through from Logan Valley?
Based on our last discussions with the county, it's no timeline anywhere in the near future. It could be four to five years is what we're hearing. And that's based on a meeting I had with Precinct Three about two months ago.
Any other questions regarding the Woodard changes or proposal?
No, and when will this go, I do have one, when will this go on the website?
Tomorrow.
Okay. And we are notifying parents in those zones that are, that will be affected?
Blanca, you want to speak to that? You have letters and information that they post and share.
Right. Tomorrow, we'll be posting on the website and then we will be sending all the information to all the schools affected to put in their newsletters. And tomorrow, starting tomorrow morning, we will have that link where they can give us input anonymously on any of the proposals that... where they can give us input anonymously on any of the proposals that we're looking at, initial plans at the present time. So, all that will go into place once we get a little bit closer to January, and we're able to make a, we're, we are able to organize all the community input, and Sherwood Board members will make any modifications or additions if necessary. And then, after we go through the process and you have voted on it, then we will send letters to all the parents and the students involved.
Have we, Teresa, have we ever used our, the automated phone system, like for Tanner at Cy Fair, I'll get a call from Mike Smith, it's on the recorder, the automated system? Have we ever used that for boundaries, so that we try to reach more people that could be affected?
I do not believe we have, but that absolutely is a great idea and option that we can share with the campus principals or the communications department can help facilitate, and make the parents aware in those areas that the options are posted on the website. Please review, offer any input that you may have.
Not every, not that I wouldn't do it, but not every parent reads the elementary newsletter.
No, you're right. It's usually word of mouth, but you know, anything impacting attendance boundaries travels quickly.
It travels quickly, but it seems like every time we do this, we have some community member saying, you're trying to slide this in. They have no idea what we've done.
Actually, that's a great, that's a great idea, and a great use of the school messenger system.
In talking about this, I didn't get to tell you the names of those other communities for the Woodard, so if you want me to, I'll share those with you. 3484, and the proposed is Riada Ranch West. And then 527 is Barker Lakes. And 123 is the Waterford Riada Ranch Apartments. It's that tiny little sliver in there. And then 3483 is Riada Ranch. And then 1022 is Canyon Lakes at Stonegate. I can give you the numbers for projected for next year if you'd like.
Weren't they, okay.
You have the total, total, but if you wanted it by rescode, I could give those to you.
You've also included a description in the back of your packet that has all the information as far as what subdivisions are being considered to be rezoned to other campuses. So, all this information is already in your packet, and that will be on the website.
And as I mentioned earlier, since we are really only creating one attendance boundary proposal for Woodard, if there are any other options you would like us to look at, any other areas, we'd be happy to do that. And you may not know that now, but even as, over the course of the next couple of weeks, as we provide that input to you, if you would like for us to draft any of that, if you'll just email us and let us know, we can start working on that with PASSA.
Bob?
They're going to go to Spillane and Si Woods.
Right. And 1022, actually, will go to Aragon.
Yes, that's the only section.
It's the only one.
It'll continue to go to Aragon and Si Falls. There may be changes later on when we start tackling the high schools.
So, we did grab that 1022 and have them, they are the only one that isn't going to go to Spillane and Woods. They'll go to Aragon and then Falls. Any other questions? All right, let's look at Holbrook, so the next packet that you have. And again, if you could kind of put the current one on the left, and then just put Option 1 in the middle, and then Option 2 on the right. I'm going to talk about Option 1 first. The purpose of these changes, as Teresa mentioned, we want to relieve the high enrollment numbers for Holbrook. Again, we had a committee, an administrative team, and all the principals that these changes would impact came and gave input as well. Holbrook has a smaller capacity compared to other buildings, the capacity is only 796.
976.
I'm sorry, just like secure, 976. If you look at Option 1, okay, so looking at the current option, looking at the current attendance zones, the way they are now, if you notice, south of 290, you see that little pocket of the pink that are all, they're all the little apartment complexes, all the little number rescodes, 175, 1684, 159, 145, and 164. We're looking at moving for Option 1, Apartment Complex 145 from Holbrook. There's 133 students that would be going from Holbrook to Bain. So, we're going to grab that in Option 1, and we're going to pull it down to Bain. And then, in addition, what we have to do then is move and shift some people from Bain to Kirk. And what we have on the other end of Bain's attendance zone, we have, if you look, you see where it says Hempstead Road, the area 4020, that's Summer Meyer, is it Summer Meyer Apartments or Summer Meyer Place? It's Summer Meyer Apartments. It's not Apartments, it's a subdivision, sorry, Summer Meyer subdivision. We're going to pull that down to Kirk, and then if you see where it says Gessner Road in the very bottom of your sheet, you look at 4030 and then 4041, that is called, 4041 is called Spring Branch Terrace, and Spring Branch Villa is 4030. We're going to pull those and have them go to Kirk in Option 1. So, 4020...
Kristy, how many, how many, and I'm sorry, interrupt.
It's okay.
How many students in each of those sections?
4020 is three. And Spring Branch Terrace is three. And Spring Branch Villa is 140. Okay, and then Park West Apartments, that 145 over there in that little pink area, those apartments, that's 133. So, in the end, you're, in Option 1, you're adding 146 to Kirk. You're taking about 13 away from Bain, and then, and you're taking 133 away from Holbrook. So, you're just kind of shifting left or south.
The real thing I want to point out here, if you look at the capacity for Kirk, you can see that we're really under utilizing Kirk. They, it's a larger campus, since it's one of our newer elementary schools, and so we really need to push more students there. And we don't see any potential growth, if you're familiar with that Kirk area, other than the subdivisions that are already developed. So, a lot of industrial area. It looks rather large when you look at it on a map, but they are not developments, and we don't foresee any developments going in that area. You can see, even on PASSA's projections for Kirk, if we leave it alone, they really stay steady all the way out to 2023 at only 894 students, and they have a capacity of 1092.
That is a lot of commercial and industrial parks out there on that, Brittmore Park, whatever it's called.
If you look, if you look on the current, the three maps that we have for current, the current elementary attendance, and then the middle and the high, they're not affected at all, the middle school and high school, we're keeping them, the feeder patterns are all clean for Dean and for Truitt and for Ridge.
Kristy, how many students, I'm just curious, are in 4040 and 4050?
I have to look that up, real quick. 123 is 4040. And 4050 is four.
Teresa, did y'all consider moving those to Kirk?
You know, actually, we did not. We can certainly look at it. I think, based on the numbers, if we, is it one, what is the number down at the bottom, Kristy, with the largest number of students that were rezoning from Bain to Kirk?
133.
133. That is possible, we'd have to go back and look at...
By the way, from Bain to...
No, it's 146 from Bain.
From Bain to Kirk is, is the largest number, is that Gessner Drive 4030, that's 140.
I was talking from Holbrook, I'm sorry. Holbrook, to relieve Holbrook was 133, but the other one was that Spring Branch Villa Apartments, 140.
So, we can, that's something we can certainly look at, see if there's any boundary, you know, feeder pattern changes that we may need to consider in looking at that, but we can certainly do that. And we had to be careful, also, in the number of students that we were trying to move from Holbrook to Bain, not to overcrowd Bain, because we know that also Bain is going to have a major renovation, and so Mr. Sprague's going to have, you know, challenges there, City of Houston, Portables, a really confined site as well. So, we were trying to minimize that, so that's something we can certainly look at.
I just, if, I just wanted to share that in, if you, if the board will remember, in the 1314 school year, we had rezoned students out of Holbrook to Bain, and had also rezoned students from Bain to Kirk. And those areas are right here. It's Fondelle, it was Lafayette Apartments and Via Anita. And the reason that we chose this area right here, because it would be an easy transition for transportation to pick up these students, since they're already, Bain is up here, they're already picking up in this area. These areas are the ones that we rezoned a little over a year ago. And so, we, that was one of the main considerations of being able to transport them. These sections right here that would be going to Kirk are right next to West Branch, which is also the area that we rezoned a year and a half ago. So, that was the reasoning that we were trying to look at that population as far as easier access to Bain, and it's also south of 290.
But we didn't, we didn't rezone 4050 and 4040?
No, we did not.
Okay. No, I'm just asking Teresa to, I'd like to look at those and how they affect the feeder patterns, because if Kirk has more space in Bain...
Move more students.
And, and you know, Bain has quite a few apartments in their zone, which, that's not a bad thing, but it's, you tend to have a lot more movement in and out of those apartments than you do in the neighborhoods.
Right, and it's, and it's hard to, like, the challenge we're facing currently at Holbrook, it's hard to get a good handle on how the enrollment projections are going to go out for several years. But we absolutely, because you make a great point, since Kirk has the space, and it looks like they would have that space out to at least 2023, could we move more students from Bain to Kirk? We'll look at that and send that to you.
And with Option 1, Kirk will have 1034, right, next year, so that's pretty close to capacity. Okay, now, if you look at Option 2, the only difference in Option 2...
Before you do that, now, you said in 4040 and 40, 4040, there was an additional 120?
Yes, sir, 123.
Okay, so, that would put, if we add those on to the 130, something we've already talked about.
That would put, would put Kirk at 11, was I sorry, 1157?
About 60 students over capacity.
Option 2?
Right, Mark did say, Mark just mentioned something to me that I think should be, that growth in that area, we're probably going to be adding a lot of students to Kirk, because there's not any neighborhoods going up there. It's, it's so industrial.
We'll look at it, I think it's...
Okay.
Option 2, again, if you look south of 290, and there's that little pink area in the apartment complex, 164 is called Coil Creek Apartments. So, instead of grabbing 145 like we did in Option 1, we're grabbing 164 and moving it to Bain. And in Coil Creek Apartments, it has, did I say 94? 94 students. So, that, it relieves Holbrook with 94 versus 133 from Apartment Complex 145. That's the only difference. We're still going to look at moving 4020 along with 4041 and 4030. Those are still included in Option 2. So, the only difference between an Option 1 and 2 is just a different apartment complex. Any questions on that one? Any other questions on Option 2?
Sorry about that.
It's all right. And if you look at the numbers, the projections for even in Option 1 and Option 2, they're pretty consistent for the next five years, and they're pretty even. Holbrook, even though it is smaller, it is, it's consistent with these changes. Option 1 offers more relief, about 39 kids, 40 kids.
And again, clarification, Kristy and Blanca, with all of the changes, Woodard, the one proposal, and then the two options with Holbrook, are there any changes in middle school or high school feeder patterns? For any of the students?
Hey, and Teresa, just to clarify, what I asked for was not an Option 3, it was something that you could share with the board on that last one.
Well, we'll investigate it and share whether or not we feel like it's a viable option to bring forward, so, yeah.
I just don't want to get into like Option 9 and 10A and 10B, we've had that before.
Correct, correct.
Go ahead, Bob. Exactly.
Teresa, I have a question, because Holbrook and Bain are known for transitional students coming in and out. Is Kirk also, does it have a large group?
You know, not as much. They have some very, you know, pretty stable, nice subdivisions and areas. They have Lake Zone Eldridge, Twin Lakes, or a couple of the real stable, large subdivisions in that area. I can, look, Blanca can probably speak to that better than anyone about, I'm not certain that there are many apartment complexes that are currently zoned where you see a higher mobility rate.
At the present time, there's no apartment complexes in the Kirk zone. Their mobility rate is less than 4%. Holbrook and Bain are closer, you know, to 55 to 60%, depending. One of the issues of these cluster of apartments, sometimes they move from apartment to apartment, so they may stay in the same school, they may not.
And in addition, we have Carverdale, which is a very stable subdivision as well, that's currently zoned to Kirk. So, really, Kirk, and you can see that in their projected enrollment, you don't see it fluctuating much at all because historically, that's not what we've seen in that area, so...
I just, I know that the Bain and Holbrook, that's a real challenge for them.
Mobility is a huge challenge, and that's why we're having to come back to you, what, a year later, with a proposal to move more students, because it's just as soon as we move one area, we, some take their place.
Okay, thanks.
That's a good point, Bob. Any other questions from board members? Awesome, you guys did a great job. Thank you very much, appreciate it, Kristy, Blanca, and Teresa. No, I might not say that next year. Okay, the superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented Monday evening. Do we have a need for closed session? Fantastic. Since we don't have a need for closed session, this meeting will be adjourned, and I really do encourage everyone that can make the drive to go to San Antonio and support Cy Ranch on their quest for a state football championship.
And add also, we also have...
Cy Hoops.
Cy Hoops tournaments.
Cy Hoops tournament started tonight. You can't go to San Antonio, go over to the Berry Center, you'll see some... You can't go to San Antonio, go over to the Berry Center, you'll see some top notch basketball. That's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
And it, and in fact, for anyone who may be watching, it's the number one ranked high school tournament in the state of Texas. 24. Including the defending state champion.
That's awesome. Thank you and have a great night.